I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission. Roll call.
Mr. Magrino.
Yes.
Mr. Celepas will not be here. Mr. Mills.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Carter Phillips.
Here.
Yes.
We have a minutes in our docket. Is there a motion or any changes to the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the February 11, 2021 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded. All those in favor are proven.
Aye.
So approved. Reports and correspondence. I see we have one there.
David, we have a letter in here from Mr. Joseph McLaughlin, who's a local builder. He's asking us to consider granny flats. We don't have to discuss this now. I suggest we get through the new business and then under planning portion, we can discuss that.
Will do.
And I do have another matter in the planning portion I want to discuss with the planning commission.
Will do that. Are there any site plans or sub- that have been filed for review?
We have the Alex site plan. That was the plan that was before you last month for the variances. They did get the variances, correct?
They got both of them?
Correct. They got both variances, so they're coming for site plan approval. We also have the, can I announce the Scenic Valley subdivision is being filed for review tonight?
No.
Scenic Valley subdivision has filed a subdivision just to create two parcels there where the golf course is. Simple subdivision. And that's all I have.
Okay. The agenda stays the same?
Yes.
Are there any audience comments that are not part of the agenda tonight? Having none and there isn't any old business, let's move on to new business. And our first one is the planning commission recommendation for the Marnell subdivision.
Philip Marnell, who owns two lots, lot six and seven in the Ridgeview Plan on Valley View Road, is seeking to consolidate those two lots into one. This plan simply removes that common lot line between lots, those two lots, and creates one, 1.16 acre lot. This area of Peters is zoned, low-density residential. The minimum lot size is a half acre. The staff's recommending approval, and I'm going to amend my recommendation. Condition number two can be removed. I guess that 30-foot building line is shown as some sort of covenant in the Ridgeview Plan, and according to Harshman Seaton Group, the surveyor, they still have to show that on there, so we'll, staff's recommending approval subject to those two conditions, condition number one and condition number three.
Just for curiosity, why were you recommended it? Is the building line 50 foot?
Well, the building line there is 50 feet, but back when the Ridgeview Plan was recorded, it was recorded with 30-foot building line, and according to Harshman Seaton Group, the surveyor, I forget his name, he's saying that he would have to get everyone in that neighborhood to sign off on the plan to remove that building line. It's not that important. It's 50-foot building line, so.
Any discussion on this?
Well, that's where the building is.
Any problems, questions? Ladies and gentlemen, I don't think we need to have any audience comments if there isn't any questions from the commission.
I'll make a motion to recommend the Marnell subdivision pursuant to Ed Zook's March 4, 2021 memo with removing number two from the recommendation, recommending the condition.
I'll second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion is approved. Going on to our second item of new business, the planning commission recommendation for West Venetia Mixed Use Corridor. This is a zoning amendment to allow personal services as a permitted use along Venetia Road.
This is a zoning ordinance amendment. Council was set Monday, March 22, 2021, as the public hearing date for this proposed zoning amendment. Planning commission's role is to review this and make a recommendation to council. This application comes to us from the Venetia Group LLC. They're the owners and developer of the Venetia Postal Plaza. They filed a zoning ordinance amendment application requesting that the township consider allowing personal services in the West Venetia Road Mixed Use Corridor zoning. We could just flip to that zoning map. The West Venetia Road is that area in green on the southern side of Venetia Road. It runs on the southern side of Venetia Road from Bee Belt Road west to our Nottingham Across the street from that zoning district is single-family residential neighborhoods. The request, or the current mixed-use corridor does not allow personal services as a permitted use in that district. Personal services is defined in our zoning ordinance as follows. Commercial enterprises that provide consumer services to individuals will shall include enterprises such as barbering beauty shops, dry cleaner, shoe repairs, tailors, self-serve laundry, dry cleaning, optometrists, catering, rental supplies, travel agencies. Personal services do not include services related to pets. In their request, they talk about how personal services could be a benefit to that area, provide a convenient location for those surrounding residential neighborhoods to, you know, go to a dry cleaner, go to a tailor, go to a hair salon. Personal services is not a high-traffic generating type of use. They're relatively low-traffic generators, and planning staff agrees that in this district, it would provide nice, convenient access to nearby residents to have personal services as a permitted use in this corridor zoning district. I want to point out, in this district, Venetia Postal Plaza is the only site that is set up right now to accommodate a personal service. The majority of that corridor is undeveloped land. We do have a landscape supply facility, and we have Lighthouse Electric has a logistic facility. This is the only site that has an approved site plan, parking, highway occupancy permit. So any, if the council, planning commission would decide to let personal services be a permitted use in this district, this is the only site set up currently to accommodate them. Any future sites would be coming to planning commission for a site plan approval.
Is it like you write, Ed, that there's like three commercial spaces underneath there that they're talking about? That would be what it's like?
Approximately, they're here tonight, the owners. Approximately 4,000 square feet down there of leasable space, and I think they have a potential tenant for part of that space. Staff's comfortable with this proposed zoning amendment, and we're recommending that we do amend our zoning ordinance. And in my recommendation, I point out the specific sections, 440, 402, and section 440, 503, 405.3B. It's simply changing our charts to put personal services on the chart with a P.
Yeah.
And that's what that proposed zoning ordinance amendment does. It amends those two charts to allow personal services as a permitted use in that zoning district.
In your recollection, was there any reason why that wasn't at the time zoning ordinance was passed? Was there any discussion? Was there any opposition? Was it just not really thought of at the time?
I'm, we were adopting ordinances, we did the whole zoning. We were looking at zoning districts and what uses were allowed to be a piece of, I'm going to say it was an oversight on our part for allowing personal services in this district.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that was my question, because we talked at length about what should be allowed in all of these districts.
I don't recall.
And I don't know why, it seems almost like an outlier, because there's not, to me, there's not a huge difference between a business service, post office, excavating service, and personal service. And so my question was going to be exactly Rochelle's, like, I don't, you know, have any recollection of why we wouldn't have included it in our, or if there was a specific reason or an objection by any of the.
I don't recall any objections to any of the proposed uses in this corridor. I don't recall specifically talking about why personal services is not in this district. I think it was more of an oversight.
When you look at this chart, the other zones that, the other districts that it's permissible in are very similar to this West Venetia, what the description of that corridor looks like to me. Can you tell, when you look at the map, Seth, that's the zoning map, can you tell us where that is approximately on there, which intersection?
See where that X is?
That's the site. It's faintly outlined in blue.
Oh, there it is, okay. No, I couldn't see it at first.
They have a highway occupancy, the driveway's in, it comes, it tees up with the Pine Ridge Drive across the street.
Yeah, that picture.
Site distance there, plenty of parking.
Yep, ready to go.
I live right around the corner, and when you're that far into Peters and that far into Venetia, and you're closer, there's, I mean, it's even to get to here, it's a 12-minute drive. So if there were a few things that you could just plop out and grab and then go back home, if any area needs something or could use it, I think, I mean, for personal services, because there's nothing down there.
Yeah. Now, my considerations were what you just said, Ed, with site distance and traffic, and that intersection is lined up, so that's, those are things that would be a problem.
It's a safe location?
I just want to confirm that the people who live around this, were they notified of this? Because my recollection is that there were substantial objections to that particular facility at that location whenever they came in to build that building. And I just want to confirm that the same folks were notified of this request, and to note that I do not see any of them here, at least in my recollection. Is that the case?
Yeah, every owner of property in that corridor got notified, plus 600 feet around that corridor got notified of this proposed zoning amendment. I have not heard any of that.
We have, we've heard zero comments.
There's been a few questions. What are we doing? What's it all about? But there's been no objections.
As a segue, is there anybody in the audience that has an objection to this? Okay. Well, we know how this side of the room is. How about you guys?
Just one question on the photograph of the building. It's not really a zoning question. It may, but just, what is the lowest level? I noticed that is what we're talking about here. Is it the level that, right there?
That's it. Yes.
Understood. Okay.
Venetia Road's off to your upper left.
Yeah, it's kind of on the high side there. This is behind the building.
You come in level with Venetia Road to the post office, and then you drop down the driveway to the lower level.
Understood. I've been over there. We'll be over there soon with baseball season starting.
Venetia Road's to the left on this.
To, yes.
Yes.
That's true.
Maybe the applicants could come and tell us why they requested this and what they got going on at their location.
Yeah, would the applicant like to, please send your positive thoughts on the.
Introduce yourself to the folks on TV.
Sure. Brian Moschalelli, one of the members of Venetia Group that built the post office. So basically, we're just trying to find tenants for the space that, you know, might, in this case, I think would actually benefit the surrounding area, the residents that are close by. And I don't think in any way it would be a detriment to anybody around there, so we're hoping that you guys can see your way to allow the personal services be an option for us to have occupancy, deal with that kind of thing, so.
Brian, could you tell us who the tenants, not by, you don't have to name the business, but.
Brief description.
The current tenant we're actually working with?
Yeah, and how much square footage they want.
So the one tenant that we are working with now that is personal service, it's actually a beauty salon. She's going to try and make it an upscale-type beauty salon, and they're going to take about 1,500 square feet of the roughly 4,000 that's available. So about a third-ish of what we have. And we're moving along with them, hoping that this all goes through, so.
Any other potential tenants you have?
We have a couple. Believe it or not, we have a barber shop that's just.
I was going to ask you, are they in the same vein of services?
We've had, we've had several different, we've had some, I called you guys, somebody that dealt with pets, and that's a no-go. I understand that. We've dealt with some people who want to do not quite a convenience store, but something similar, and then coffee shop, ice cream shop, stuff like that, we've been getting a lot of interest in. It's, obviously, time's what they are. Office space is not a real desirable thing right now. That would be the, you know, but that, we've had very limited interest in using that space for office space.
Coffee shop would be nice, though.
Yeah, I think a lot of people would like that, and I think it could do well, so. We're going to work with that town as well. And I think that's all we're going to, group, use.
Yeah.
But in this case, specifically a beauty salon, we do have serious interest from a barber as well, but I don't know if we can have, that's something we have to figure out, too, if we could work together, because they're going to have to find out.
I don't think men are going to high-service.
I don't think so.
Leave yourself. I don't know if that population mix too much.
Brockup can't get his hair like that without.
It's difficult, it's difficult, many hours.
But you could have more than one personal service.
Right. I would notice, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So like I said, Monday, March 22, council's having a public hearing. I think they advertised this in a way that will allow them to make that decision that night. What they need to know is how planning commission feels about it.
Anything else from the members?
I'll make a motion to approve, recommend, I recommend the West Venetia Road Mixed Use Corridor zoning amendment to allow personal services a permitted use according to the planning staff memo dated March 5, 2020.
2021.
2021, excuse me.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have several seconds. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. Thank you very much. Passes. Item C, planning commission recommendation for the Patton subdivision lot with variance.
For you this evening is a variance application that is going before the Township Zoning Hearing Board at their upcoming virtual hearing on Tuesday night, March 16, 2021, for Mr. Scott Patton at 158 Bauer Hill Road. Mr. Patton is requesting a 10-foot variance from the Township Zoning Ordinance to allow for a flag lot that only has 40 feet at the Bauer Hill Road right-of-way. The zoning ordinance requires that all flag lots have at least 50 feet at the right-of-way. The current property is about 6.3 acres in size on both sides of Bauer Hill Road. All zoned low-density residential. Proposed zoning, the proposed subdivision plan would create two separate lots, both of which in terms of size would comply with the Township Zoning Ordinance. And the one, Lot A, on the left-hand side there would be in full compliance with the Township Zoning Ordinance. The only issue in question is the 40-foot width at the right-of-way for Lot B. Mr. Patton has expressed some concerns about the, you know, the long-term safety of his house in terms of protecting it. I believe, and he can speak on this a little bit later, it's the oldest house in the township built sometime in the early 1800s. It's been in his family for quite some time, so his primary concern, per his narrative that was included in your packet, is just, you know, securing the long-term viability of that property. Here are some brief images from his application, and I'll give him a chance to speak in a little bit. An image and a painting of the house as seen from roughly the same location on Bauer Hill Road. A certificate from the Washington County Historical Society designating it as a historical structure. Some of the interior details of the house itself, some more interior details just showing, you know, the true craftsmanship of the house. However, you know, while staff can understand Mr. Patton's concern, and we really do appreciate his intent, we just don't feel that there's really any criteria in this case that would necessitate a variance. You know, as shown, the existing house on the property is about 150 feet from that southwestern corner of the property. You know, if he were to maintain strict compliance with the Township Zoning Ordinance and establish that 50-foot flag lot, flag pole at the right-of-way, he would still have somewhere around 100 feet between that shared lot line and the existing house. And we believe that, you know, that still gives him enough buffer to establish the distance that he's looking for and to meet his intent. It also doesn't have to be, you know, a 50-foot flag lot, flag pole, the entire length. It really just needs to be established at the right-of-way so we can ensure that we have sufficient area to place a driveway with site distances and all those other things. So, you know, that's the intent of that section of the ordinance. Additionally, these two lots, Bauer Hill Road is a collector road, so if this plan were to move forward in any way, shape, or form, it would require two modifications to allow for new driveways, new lots to be created on a collector road. So if we were to go through the subdivision plan process, that would also be something to take into consideration by planning commission and ultimately council. You know, for the reasons I described, at our hearing on Tuesday night, planning staff will be providing a recommendation to the zoning hearing board that they deny the variance request in this case. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. I also have the applicant here, and I know he would like to provide some more information.
A quick question, Seth, so that if, if the zoning hearing board were to approve this request.
Yep.
The applicant would have to continue with the subdivision, correct? To make it, he doesn't, he wouldn't have to continue with the subdivision, it would just stand there for.
Yeah, I mean, unless, unless the zoning hearing board placed.
Is there a certain term on that? I guess, I guess I can link up.
They, they could establish a term, and all likelihood, I think they would, maybe a year or so to get a subdivision plan approved.
And if it didn't, I mean, given that scenario, it would kick back to the, the variance would no longer.
It would expire.
It would expire, okay.
Yeah. If they decided to do that. It's not a requirement of the zoning hearing board to establish that time period.
Why is these, why is it being subdivided in the first place?
I'll let Mr. Patton provide a little bit more detail, but from my brief understanding, you know, he's been approached in the past about acquiring the property, demolishing the house, and developing a residential subdivision. That's not what he wants to see happen with the property, so he's trying to create two lots, two estate lots, build houses on them, and then protect the existing house in the best way he knows how. But I'll let him talk more about that.
And before we have the applicant up, being a devil's advocate, what, even if all this came to fruition, it was all approved across the board, subdivision, everything, if no, can't, can it possibly happen that down the road, somebody could buy all three, eliminate the lot lines, and do something else?
Theoretically, I guess it could be upon Mr. Patton to establish restrictions on any subdivision plan, and he would be the sole owner of the property to maybe prevent that from happening. I'm not sure he would probably be one to investigate that on his behalf, but if he didn't do that, if he just created these lots and somebody built them and put houses on them without any further restrictions, then sure, somebody could come in and acquire all three lots and build a subdivision.
Yeah. Any questions for Seth before I ask the applicant to come on? So if Mr. Patton's here, would like to speak to us, please come on up, introduce yourself and.
I'm Scott Patton, lifelong Peters Township resident, for what that's worth, next to nothing. I made copies of all the papers, but I think you've got copies of, which I didn't know until I spoke to Seth. I could have saved a lot of money from shuttle.
Yeah, we have.
But in any event, I've been approached, as Mr. Coons mentioned, twice in the past decade or so, once before the 2008 housing crunch and once since, by developers, and I allowed them to come to me because I was curious, what's my ground worth? Both made me generous offers, and as Mr. Coons already said, both, I kind of led them on, I wanted to see where their hearts were. Both said that they would develop it with an arcing cul-de-sac road, the road coming in from about here, arcing through the middle, cul-de-sac there, and lots radiating out in each direction like is very common to see in all the developments in Peters of these days. And yes, it's only been in my family since 1880, since 1818, if you count my marriage, and the last thing I want to see, even though it would put a lot more money in my pocket, is that 6 acres to get subdivided into a typical, modern home plan. So the mention came up, what's to stop Fred Schmuckel from buying all three lots and still melding them together and tearing down the house? It's my intent, I have, one of my neighbors already wants Lot A. I thought I would build, with my wife's handicap, the old house is to me just wonderful, but steps, 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 it's not a modern house, of course. So I thought I'd build on Lot B, a nice, single-level home, and then either rent the farmhouse, or eventually I'll kick the bucket and it'll get sold to somebody. But once it's on a mere, about 3/4 of an acre around the house, but we'll meld that with what's in the floodplain on the west side of Bauer Hill Road, and I think that should protect it forever. My wife says, you can't protect things from beyond the grave, but I think that would work. Now, why I want, I want 35 feet for that little frontage, because, am I allowed to give you papers, or is?
Yeah, you certainly can. You want, you mean 35 feet instead of 40 feet?
Instead of 40, the minimum that we can functionally get away with, put in a driveway and any, obviously, utilities that would have to come in, water line, gas line, electric line, everything underground, of course. So I've looked around the township. This is a very nearby subdivision of two flag lots. It's on Valley View Road, and it actually doesn't front on a Peters Township Road, and that might make the difference.
Thanks, Scott.
I'll take the whole back. Thank you.
But if you look at that picture I just gave you, I didn't take tape and measure it, they might have me arrested, but I walked it, and those long, the long and thin flag pole of those flag lots is about 40 feet. So somewhere in the past, there's been an exemption made, again, at Frontstone on Nottingham Township Road, although the lots are in Peters Township. That long flag pole comes to Peters Township property. So whoever's got the buttons to make this go back, would you go back to the picture of my house? That one. We have several pieces of art that various artists who like historical topics have painted. And in every case, this is the line of sight they chose. And that home and that view contributes to that neighborhood's character. In the papers that you have, I showed, I think you have, that my neighboring two lots to the south of me, on Venetia Road, are both in the manner that I want my lots A and B to be. And that is, the houses sit back 150 feet from Bauer Hill Road. They aren't flag lots, those owners just chose to get two-and-a-half acre lots and put their houses at the back. That's the character they wanted to show, and that's the character that I think will preserve this. Again, my neighbor who wants to buy Lot A, who bought that Lot A.
Of course.
Somebody wants to put his house here, along that way. I, if I build and put my lot, my house here, my present house is, you know, 25 feet off the right-of-way, but that's immaterial to what I'm requesting. So I don't know, I am not making this variance request for financial purposes whatsoever. I think it's important to preserve that view that that picture shows, and the more frontage I give a potential owner, the more monumental stuff that would impede that, that southern view of my house. Not again for me, but all of my neighbors agree, that house is the first house in Peters Township. And I would hope I can convince Peters Township's management that it's worth preserving it as much as possible. And that's the whole reason for this variance. I would not subdivide this property at all. I would live till I die, if I didn't fear for what would happen when I do. Hats on.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So I hear what you're saying, and that's, you have a 40 feet, so you're saying that the significance of, you know, if you, if you move that line to the left 10 feet, no, you still can't build a house. no, you still can't build a house in that spot because you don't have enough setback distance, and you could still keep the inflection point where you have it there would flare to that spot. So there would not be a, a variance needed beyond that point, the way, I mean, so how would that change the view of your, of your house, or how would that change that by doing it that way?
We would never know what the potential buyer would do to his frontage. He could plant a row of trees along his property, separating it from the adjacent property, put up a visual fence. The more I can move his line away from that house, the better. I think every five feet helps. So 50 feet's what the zoning ordinance says, and I understand its purpose. I'm a, I'm a functional type of person, but I see the more ground we give to the old house, the less intrudance any new owner of the adjacent property, Lot B, could do. And that's what I'm trying to preserve, minimize the potential, not for the financial reason, but for the preservation of what I think, and I hope everybody agrees, is one of the most valuable historical artifacts left in our township. And these old houses are just getting pushed aside for modern development, and I, I just want to prevent that as much as possible. Now, if I build on Lot, the far right-hand Lot, Lot B, then obviously some future could bulldoze the house I build, but I'll build a nice place, so it's less likely for that to happen. But that's the reason I want to do it is, is historical preservation, basically.
Is there anything historical in, in the ground at that location? The house is 100 feet away from that, so is there something specific at that location on the roadside that's in that area that needs to be preserved physically in that, at that location?
No. Mr. Coons pushed the button, go through the art images. It's just that that's the view that if you give, and that's almost at the corner, you can see the shadow of the walnut tree right here. And the more you would back that up, the more someone could intrude upon that view. And, next picture, please. That some artist chose that one again, you can see the big walnut trees overhang, and imagine you went 50 feet from where the artist's signature is there, and somebody planted a row of tall, skinny trees or something, and one more while the next one is up close.
Yeah.
And the only purpose of all these is to illustrate to everyone what the historical character is. Those pictures, by the way, are, are preserved in the Washington County Historical Society. The men who came to evaluate it, historical society representatives, were awestruck, struck by it, because they said they've never seen a farmhouse that had that kind of artistic character in its interior woodwork.
Oh, craftsmanship's beautiful.
So I just think we need to preserve it, and I say "we" as a community, as, to the highest extent possible. And as long as Lot B has a functionally working flag pole, why give them any more than they functionally have to have? I'm hoping that we can agree that for historical reasons, let's minimize the impact of the subdivision. Oh, and somebody asked, what's to stop Fred Schmuckel from buying all three? I haven't met with a lawyer yet, I've talked informally to one. He said, we can put in each of this resulting deeds clauses, but stay with the deed, but say, although Peters Township's setback rule is 50 feet, if you buy this lot, you are agreeing there'll be no further subdivision, and your setback will be 150 feet. So again, hopefully, that'll hold up if it's in the deed, like, like resource, you're allowed to own the resource, what's that called, the stuff underneath you? Or not can be written into the deed to control.
Let me ask a question, another question. We have several lawyers on the commission, plus this planning staff is here. Can a covenant be written into that deed saying they can't put any monuments or anything more than a mailbox?
Yeah.
And just be done with it?
Yeah. So that's, that's where I was going with that, too, is, is if you're going to put a covenant language into your deed that keeps you from building there, you can put a covenant to not obstruct that view from the, across the, the lot, and you wouldn't have to go through the variance piece at all.
That of course, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That was my question, is what's your game plan if the zoning board does, you know, denies your, your request for a variance? So, you know.
Well, I have to ask, if I think the risk that someone might damage that view in the future, whether I'll subdivide or not, and run, let my heirs run the risk of what happens.
And I guess, too, when you say, for, the other side of that is, when you say, like, you know, put in a covenant that says that will not block the view, I mean, that's open to all kinds of interpretation.
Sure. And I was just generalizing.
And that's certainly gonna, different people can interpret that different ways.
Absolutely.
Can I, did you guys have a question? Because I have a question. Yeah. So if we, so my question is this, if we remove the property owner's intent and why he wants to do this, and that it's for preservation, because of this house and things like that, we just remove all of that?
Yep.
And is any other property owner that comes in here and says, I've got this big giant lot, right, I want to keep my house for myself, but I want to, I want to subdivide, which we see happening all the time, right? And then needs this variance. Is it, is there anything unsafe about that request? Or where the driveway would go, do you have sightline issues or anything like that?
I mean.
And the reason, just so you know the background of why I'm asking, is that, I mean, did it last month when I was here, people, property owners come in and ask for variances for a number of different reasons, right? And I'll just use last month as an example. There was, we had, there were people who came in for the commercial area, and it was for a commercial purpose, and we heard all the reasons why that would be good for the community, it would make things look better, it would make things easier, it would make things look, look prettier, and notch up, and the sightlines work nicely, and it will give longevity. But there really wasn't anybody who said, hey, if we don't grant this, there's nothing that can be done with that property, but that commercial area would not be buildable, could not be developed, that it's going to sit vacant in this crappy look forever. And so for commercial purposes, you know, we provided the variance because it made sense to us, or it made sense to the community, right? And then for, you know, I've been in Peters since early 2000s, when there were very few developments, another all over the place. And we have seen variances come through by, requests by developers who want small variances because it makes it easier, it makes it better, it makes it, you know, things line up a little bit better for those developers. And so I'm just saying that if we, if we look at this differently, and, and no disrespect to your intent, sir, at all, because that's what you should be telling us, that if we put aside what, what, what the gentleman wants out of this, and whether it's to be prettier or sightlines, and we just look at this from a subdivision standpoint, and he was any other person who came in here and said, I don't need six acres, I can make some money, and I want to subdivide my property and ask for that 10 foot, it's a 10-foot variance, right? You know, how would we look at it then, if we're a developer for development purposes? And so I guess part of my question then is, and I know I've gone on Seth, I apologize.
It's okay.
If you, if we look at this that way, is there, is there, is there a safety issue, or a sight distance issue, or some other issue that you think that you evaluated arises from subdividing this property in this location?
You know, in terms of a sight distance issue, I don't believe so.
Okay.
I went out to the property the other day to post my little zoning hearing board flag, and I stood there, it was on the other side of the house, but I was like, I mean, I can see almost all the way down to Venetia.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the surveyors put a marker on here where they believe the proposed driveway would intersect with Bauer Hill, or, yeah, Bauer Hill, and they're showing 358 feet of sight distance to the right, 835 feet sight distance to the left. That exceeds our requirements for driveways. I mean, we've not verified that.
Yeah.
You know, typically, if it were somewhere close, we would go out with our township traffic engineer, especially part of a modification, and make sure that what they're showing us complies. So in terms of a sight distance issue, I really don't think that that is something of a concern.
And I'll add, they could put a driveway on 40 feet as simply as they could do on 50 feet. It's just a matter of our rules, 750. In this particular case, and Mr. Patton convinced me, Seth's been dealing with Mr. Patton, this first time I've heard it, I don't personally see a big problem with 10 feet, 40 versus 50, in this particular case.
Yeah, I want to be clear, I don't, I don't, I don't know that specifically, when we're talking about variances, whether it has to be 40 versus 50, but I'm also saying that I've seen variances passed throughout this township for other reasons, where it's maybe not absolute that it has to happen. It's, it makes it better, it makes it easier, it makes it prettier, it makes it better for the developer, or commercially, we've seen it all the time. So I, I'm just saying, I don't know that we should simply be looking at it from a, the purpose why he wants it, because he can, he said he thinks he wants to maybe build a bunch of houses, and it wouldn't matter.
When I come, and again, all these functional reasons have been brought up, that Lot B, which is the right-hand lot, would function fine with 40 feet. And if it'll help preserve, contribute to the preservation of the historical character of that property, which has our neighborhood and our township, that's why I want to do this.
Mr. Patton, you're not proposing to dedicate or do anything in addition to this preservation of the subdivision? I mean, we're talking about this is going to be a home that'll eventually be for sale at some point down the road.
Yes, well, I already have a cancelled buyer who's interested in historical structures, but who knows after that person?
Sure.
He's 70 years old as well. But it is a Washington County-registered historical landlord. If I could prove George Walkington slept there, it would be a national preservation landlord. He actually did predate this house by about a decade, so he didn't sleep there.
From my perspective, and I would lean on our attorneys on the, on the council here, the commissioners, to say, you know, I know there's hardships involved and what VA requires, but from my perspective, it's a rare opportunity we get to have a property come before us that has this level of historical nature of the township. There's a lot of chatter about the changing nature of our township, and I think that there's an opportunity to protect it, because I somewhat agree with Mr. Patton, that at some point, if this was six acres, someone's going to try to take advantage of it and, you know, use it for its highest and best use. If there's an ability to, for this commission to take a small aspect, whether it be 10 feet or so, to protect it, I see no reason why not do that. Caveat being, our attorney should tell us if we're setting precedent or not, but I believe that's more of a ZVA function, in my humble, civil, and during opinion, so that's where I stand.
I mean, what I would just say, as somebody who used to do land use for my law firm, variances are, you know, they're, they're factually oriented, they're factually based, there are all these criteria, and any lawyer can, any good lawyer can make the argument on both ways. If I were standing here, I, I can make the argument that these all meet the, you know, the conditions of a, of a variance, and other lawyer could certainly make the arguments that it does not. And, and then when they're looking at precedent and things like that, the way variances work is, you know, sure, somebody could appeal this, and it would, you know, it's going to go up, it could go up the ladder, but it would take an appeal, and that can happen really from any variance. And I don't know that there aren't other variances, in my personal opinion, that have been passed by the township that maybe also did not strictly meet the criteria, but have been passed by the township and have either not been challenged, which is the easy route, right? Or which have been upheld, you know, by the court system.
To put a finer point, from a planning perspective, I see no issue with the variance request.
But I think also, we've got to remember, we're just recommending this. Other municipalities, you don't even go to a planning commission for these requests. They just go straight to the ZHB.
Correct.
So we're just, whether we say yes or no to you, it's meaningless, so you know. You've still got to get the approval of our zoning hearing board.
I, I don't, I don't know why. It's not necessarily me, you're right, the zoning hearing.
It's up to that, their decision, right?
They have final say.
So we've, we've recommended things that ZHB before, and they denied.
They do, but.
Yeah.
I, I think it bodes well for any applicant.
I agree.
Come to the zoning hearing board with a favor.
But I think, Mr. Patton, I just want to warn you, even if we recommend this unanimously.
Well, I do understand that your, your support doesn't guarantee.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
But how often has anyone ever made such a request based on historical preservation versus something that'll add functionality or financial return?
And I tell you what, Mr. Patton, I don't think I've seen one of those commissions since I've been here, for historic reasons, so forth.
First of all. If Ed's not seen it, it's never happened.
One thing I want to say is, and I, I don't see any problem with the variance that you're requesting here, but one thing, I, I think you're talking about two different things, sort of at the same time, the historical value of the house and the historical value of the, of the view. And I think those both play into the historical nature, and what I would make sort of caution you is that, no matter what happens here, or with the ZHB, I, I, if you're truly interested in trying to maintain the historical nature or maintain this property, I, I would make sure you take six additional steps, such as the ones you talked about with an attorney, if you're going, if you're interested in doing something like that, because the, the, you know, I, I don't necessarily think 10 feet one way or the other affects the historical nature of, of the house. You know, somebody could still buy it and tear it down tomorrow, right? Like, if somebody bought it, unless you did something else, right? Like, now, the historical, the, the aspect of the view is, is a slightly different story, 10 feet one way or the other, I understand what you're trying to do, but at the same point, I looked at that picture and think, if I really wanted to get around, you know, this, if I wanted to obstruct this view and wanted trees on both sides of my driveway, if I bought Lot B, if it wasn't you, there's nothing to stop, you know, that from happening, so.
On the road, that could happen.
Yeah, I, I would just, you know, make sure that if you're really committed to trying to preserve this, take additional steps.
And I am, or I wouldn't be here.
Yeah.
And one more thing I've done, if somebody did bulldoze my house and want to build on it, I'm not going to give them enough land here. If you go back 50 feet, they won't get in the backyard. So that makes it, first of all, divides three-quarters of an acre to tear down a perfectly viable house. Somebody might, I mean, it's not impossible.
Yeah, I was going to say that.
But I don't think it's very likely. It could happen, but I'm trying to maximize that not happening. And I hope this would help, and again, preserve not just the house's character, but the neighborhood's character at the same time. And I certainly thank you for your time. I know it's caused some spinning wheels here in people's minds, because again, if nobody's ever mentioned this, a variance for the purpose of historical preservation before, it's something somewhat new, and I thank you for considering it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak?
If I had have spoken to all my neighbors with what they say in person, what would be what they say if they were on me? And they've all said, oh, we, we preserve it to the maximum.
Well, Seth, did we notify the folks? Have we heard any?
I've heard, I've gotten two responses back. The individuals I spoke with, I think one was this property, oh, my mouse, give me just a second. This property here, Lot 109 of the plan behind, and I think Lot 105, both of which were appreciative of the lot configuration, because it's not a half-acre development directly behind their houses. They also were questioning the legitimacy of the 10-foot variance, so they were playing it from both sides, but I think they were just more concerned about lot configuration more than anything else.
They're working down the road, too.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I guess my only question would be, is this, this safety no, that was across the street there, wherever that driveway is located, did that cause any issues or problems with you at all?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
I'd say that the property across the street is all 90% floodplain, and if a developer did buy the four and three-eighths acres, that's Lots A, B, and C, that's where the stormwater retention fund would go, and it would be melded with the, I said that the house would sit on three-quarters of an acre on that side of Bauer Hill, but that property will be melded with the two acres that's on the west side of Bauer Hill Road, where there's a barn and a garage that aren't shown on this drawing, but there's a barn and a garage. And one last thing, if you look at your map that's in the packet, if all those sheets were done, Bauer Hill Road did not use to go between my house and barn, it was across that floodplain and over to Venetia Road on that side of this creek, and it used to be a long driveway from our house down to, walk along the highway. So times have changed, and we've been trying to work through those changes, and we're still preserve.
Any more comments, questions from the commission? Having that, may I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion and decline mission recommend approval of the Patton zoning hearing board application for the 10-foot variance identified in the letter of March 4th, 2021, subject to, actually, there are no conditions on this, other end, here, Seth.
No, because I was, you know, with me recommending denial, I would have not established any conditions for an approval. So if you wanted to create any, that would be incumbent upon the planning commission.
I have no conditions to create.
Fair enough.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay, we have a motion and second it. Hold those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Any.
So we have a 5-0 vote of approval to recommend this to the ZHP. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
The meeting's virtual.
Yes.
Okay, under miscellaneous, let's go back to the letter and talk about that granny flats.
Okay, we do have the letter from Mr. McLaughlin asking the township to consider some zoning rules to allow granny flats. And when he talks about granny flats, he's talking about a detached structure on the same lot as a primary structure for the purpose of a parent, father, that's what he's talking about. Before we get into that discussion, it's, council would like to have a workshop with planning commission sometime here, to talk about the new zoning ordinance that we adopted in 2017, and the projects that have been approved, the town center, the Waters project, the projects and residential developments that we have in the MR overlay, Brookwood Place, Brookwood Village. They want to talk about some of the conservation residential developments that we have approved that are under construction, Juniper Woods, Just About Farms. They'd like to sit down with staff, planning commission, council, and see if everyone's satisfied with the product that's being created by this new zoning, these new zoning laws, and determine whether or not we should make adjustments. So they want to do that some Monday in the near future. They threw out two dates of March 29 or April 5. Those are Mondays. We'll decide when you guys can be available so that we can have a true workshop with planning commission being represented, so that when we do discuss that, they hear your thoughts and opinions. At that same time, we can talk about granny flats, and whether or not there's any interest from council to consider allowing zoning rules to be amended to allow granny flats. At one point during our revision to the zoning ordinance of 2017, we had a proposal to allow them, and it got removed by council.
If my memory serves me correctly, we removed that because of enforcement purposes. How do you know if it's going to be an actual?
Correct.
An actual fail, who's going to enforce that it's an actual failure of a war, if it's just an Airbnb that somebody puts in the corner of their house? I think that was the reason that we removed it from consideration, if I remember correctly.
Very definitely.
I don't remember that at all.
Hey, granny flats, not every day you come across granny flats. We're talking about planning.
Exactly right.
Yeah. So. And that could be something to talk about at the workshop.
Right.
Yeah.
Instead of debating it here now, we can talk about it with council, is there any interest on their part to consider that again? And two, sit down with them, we would, it's just a shame we can't get on a bus and take a ride and look at all these new neighborhoods like we used to do.
Yeah, we used to do that, that was good.
But we would sit in this room, spread out, masks on, and we would have some visuals of the new neighborhoods that are being developed, so that you get a sense of. Has planning commission been to any of these new developments? Brookwood Place, where the brownstones are being built?
Mm-hmm. Brookwood Place, yeah, I have.
Right next to it is.
Driven through a number of.
Brookwood Village.
Yeah, right, right.
With small paddy homes, Just About Farms off of Bebaut Road, off of Bauer Hill. So, you know, our new zoning laws have been in place since 2017. We have new developments being built under those rules, and council wants to make sure everyone's comfortable with what's being created.
Could you create a playbook for us, that we could, maybe you could tell us where we should visit, so we have a little more.
Yeah, we'll email you.
Yeah, some.
With a little map, and show you where these areas are, so that before the workshop, we can take a ride. The important thing is, is we need to pick a Sunday here. They just threw two dates out, May the 29th and the 5th. Either of those dates.
The 5th's bad for May, it's the day after Easter. Might be a lot of people away, so.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. It gets kids home.
Yes, it is. But what about the 29th?
29th's bad for May.
29th.
It will work for May, I thought.
Yes.
29th works for me.
Sounds like that's it for the show.
Right now, it works for me. My husband's having ACL surgery, so there's a chance that, if you shouldn't go around that, because I don't know how long I'm going to be tied up.
Let me run that past them and see if, see if that date.
Yeah, you push that off another week or so.
I will.
Yeah, and don't do that for me, that's all about coverage.
So I'll meet with, they have a meeting, or I'll meet with Mr. Lauer, township manager, let them see if council's willing to meet on the 29th. It puts a little heat on us to get some information available, we can do that.
Just throw it on the pile.
That's all I got.
Stay tuned. Before the next planning commission meeting, we should have a new township website.
Oh.
Ah, nice.
Very nice.
They got them working on a new website.
Awesome. Good.
That's all I have, is there any other issues?
Hearing none? I'm calling it.